Convene this meeting of the Economic Development Committee. I'm happy to preside over an action-packed agenda today with my colleagues. We're still waiting to get in a quorum, so let's move to our commission appointment. You have with us today Nicole Duckett-Frick. Nicole, why don't you come up? We had a chance to chat earlier.
Yes.
But why don't you share for my colleague and the audience your background, your interests, and what you intend to do on the L.A. Convention Center Board of Commissioners?
Thank you.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. Before we start, would you like the CLA to read that item?
I would like the CLA to read that item, please.
Item number one, our communications from the mayor and the City Ethics Commission relative to the reappointment of Ms. Nicole Duckett-Frick to the Los Angeles Convention Center Board of Commissioners for the term ending June 30th, 2014.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner, please proceed.
Yes, so as stated, my name is Nicole Duckett-Frick, and I'm very excited to be joining the new board of the Convention Center. I was also on the previous board of the Convention Center, which was a little bit different. And what's exciting about the new board is that it's going to be more of a governing board and actually take even more of a managerial role with respect to AEG's management of the Convention Center and also manage the contract for L.A. Tourism. So as much as I enjoyed working on the board previously, I'm even more excited about the new board because it seems like we'll have even a greater effect. And before I tell you a little bit about what some of my goals are with respect to that, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a lawyer here in Los Angeles. I'm actually the managing partner of the Los Angeles office of a firm called Milberg. We do securities litigation. We mostly prosecute entities on behalf of shareholders and different investors that we represent to retain assets that have been gained through securities fraud. We also do some advisory work for investors and pension funds and state treasurers, helping keep them compliant with a lot of the regulations that investors are responsible for these days. I was born in Los Angeles. My family on both sides are from Los Angeles, and we have sort of a long history of serving both the county and the city. My grandparents worked for the county and the city, and my mother still works for L.A. County. She's actually a speech pathologist for L.A. County, and she's been with them since the '60s. So I'm definitely very excited to continue on in that tradition in serving the city and serving the county. I live in the Hollywood Hills in Councilmember LaBanche's district and have been there for probably about 10 years. I went to UCLA for law school. Go Bruins! And apologies to any Trojan fans in the audience.
We're doing fine.
It always gets me a few fans and gets me a few enemies every time. And as far as what I'd like to do with respect to the commission board, as I mentioned, it's an exciting time because with the help of AEG and the governing authority that we've now been given, I think there's a lot more that we can affect. First and foremost, I'm very focused on generating revenue for the city through the Convention Center. Traditionally, that's something that the Convention Center has always done and has always been proud to give to the general fund. But I'm hoping with the expertise of AEG that we'll be able to do even more of that and also create jobs. I know that some of the big events that the Convention Center does creates jobs. And when I got involved with the committee the first time, with the commission the first time, I remember getting very excited about what the then-general manager was talking about as far as job creation. And I know our current executive director, Bud Overham, certainly has an eye on that as well, and specifically developing more hotels in the city so that we can bring in more business. And also, what's new is that, like I mentioned, we'll be managing L.A. Tourism's contract. So we'll be able to get a lot more involved in what L.A. Tourism is doing. And I do think that their marketing leg is so important as far as the events that we get. And another thing that's really important to me, and I did discuss this when I met with Councilmember Price, is working with L.A. Tourism to market the cultural diversity that represents the city, not just District 9 where the Convention Center is, but all of the surrounding areas and the city as a whole. You know, there's a great base for the African-American community, the Latino community, the various different Asian communities that we have in Los Angeles. And I think that marketing that to not just the country but internationally can bring in a lot more tourism. Obviously, internationally, you know, you can think of opportunities where we can bring in more and say, hey, this is a city where we have a lot going on in a culturally diverse way, music, art, what have you. And that would not only bring in more tourism but also generate more revenue, which ultimately, as I mentioned, is a big goal, you know, to be able to give to the city in that way. And also, there's a new reporting duty that wasn't directly there in the previous board that is there now, which means that in reporting to the mayor and reporting to city council, we can keep a direct dialogue going to hear, you know, what are the different issues that are coming up for each of your districts that we can somehow affect and help in our work with the Convention Center.
Okay, thank you. You referenced cultural tourism and sort of expanding the base. What obstacles do you think there are going to be in really pushing this kind of, you know, positive progressive agenda forward?
I think there are the same, first and foremost, there are the same obstacles, I think, that always come up when you talk about cultural diversity, ethnic diversity. And that is that there are, you know, there are still some folks out there that don't see that as, well, first of all, there are still some folks out there that aren't for it at all, and then even those that may be don't see it as important or don't really understand it and therefore don't care to put money behind it. And so I think that in addition to that general kind of opposition, there is also, you know, the contracts and the policies and all the things that are in place that I have to adhere to and that my board has to adhere to, such that in order to push that agenda forward, I think that I need to be able to have a financial explanation for it so that across the board it looks like a good thing, even to those who wouldn't initially think of it as a good thing in and of itself.
Well, I think you've got the kind of commitment that we need. I think that the commission will benefit from your experience, having served prior, although it was a short period of time, and you were there, and certainly are familiar with the issues and concerns. And I certainly am going to be prepared to support your nomination tomorrow. Members, any thoughts or comments? Councilman Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, I think the Convention Center, I think we probably all agree that the Convention Center plays a vital role in the economic recovery of the city for some of the reasons that you described. Attracting citywide conventions in as economic drivers is going to be a critical element. And I, by the way, I should note that I couldn't be more pleased that the Convention Center's management is being led by one of the city's finest general managers and a proud USC Trojan. Fight on, Bud. Fight on. But I do want to ask you this. I, after much, much cross-examination and analysis, I ended up supporting the AEG proposal with regard to the stadium for the sole reason that it would lead to upgrades in the infrastructure of the Convention Center. Not because of the NFL, but because of, because for a year we were told that the principal challenge faced by the Convention Center is its outdated facilities and the lack of contiguous space. So assuming that that proposal is not going to go forward, how are we as a city going to overcome those challenges that continue to exist based on the infrastructure that we have in the Convention Center?
You're saying, assuming that the NFL leg doesn't go forward, how would we still continue to face those issues?
Yeah. If there is no stadium built and there is no replacement Convention Center built, how do we deal with that problem that continues to exist?
Well, two things. One, I think, and I think the commission is focused on this, and that is, even if the stadium doesn't go forward, which, as you mentioned, it's up in the air, it's contingent on an agreement with the NFL commissioner, so it's just not as strong of a guarantee. I think the commission is very focused on, even if the stadium doesn't go forward, still effectuating some kind of enhancement of the Convention Center and finding ways to support that financially even without the stadium. And one way to do that is as things that we are doing and focused on anyway, which is generating revenue via the Convention Center. So that's one way to do it. But also, with AEG's help, you know, like you, I was very much aware of doing my due diligence on researching all of the arguments back and forth on whether there should be privatization and felt very confident in going forward with that based on everything that was presented. And so I think that one of the things that AEG can offer in managing the Convention Center for the next few years is a type of infrastructure build based on whatever the circumstances are, meaning, okay, if we get the stadium, great, we'll do it this way. If we don't get the stadium, what do we have to do this way? How can we do the expansion and afford the expansion even if we don't get the NFL's support? That kind of thing. You know, I've watched what they've done with so many other entities that they own, and so I feel confident that with their help, we'll be able to effectuate that with the actual facts, whatever they're going to be.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Weezer.
Did you say you went to UCLA Law?
Yes. Are you going to hold it against me, too?
No. That's all I need to hear. You got my vote for that.
Okay. Well, that one was easy.
Again, we appreciate your commitment to service, your willingness to serve, and we look forward to making the nomination for you tomorrow, and I'm confident that with this committee's support, you will be successful.
Thank you very much.
And we look forward to working with you.
As do I. Like I said, you know, I think with the old board, there wasn't as much of a back and forth with city council, but going forward, that's a necessary part of this, so it'll be really great to have that dialogue.
Okay. Before we roll on, we establish a quorum. Oh, or just announce it, or what do we do?
Would you like me to take role?
Yeah, I want you to take role. Let's do it formally.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Kukorian?
Here.
And Councilmember Weezer?
Here.
All present, and a quorum.
All right, we have a quorum. Members, I'll...
Oh, I'm sorry. For the record, I would like to announce that the nomination of Ms. Nicole Duckett-Frick to the L.A. Convention Center will be considered by council on November 20th.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I will move that we approve that without any objection. That will be the order. We'll see you tomorrow.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Members, we are, our agenda, we are going to move items 2, 3, 4, 7, and 11 on consent. If there's an objection, we'll be continuing items 6 and 8. We're going to receive and file item 10, and that takes us to item 5. Mr. Clerk?
Item number 5 is a motion, Weezer, a serio relative to an instruction to the EWDD, the CLA, and the CAO to report with an accounting of revenues and projected revenues along with recommendations for the use of former CRA L.A. funds for economic development in areas which previously had CRA coverage.
Okay. This is a motion by our member, Mr. Weezer. Ms. Weezer, any kind of opening thoughts before we receive this report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just basically, you know, we'll wait to hear the report, but we were concerned that, given the funding that was available after the diminution of the CRA and that funding that we have received up to $100 million so far was directed to go to the general fund. But we thought it'd be worth, while it was worth it, to have a discussion as to whether, how we can redirect those funds, if we should or should not, what other cities have done, what other municipalities have done. And given that these funds were originally anticipated to go to some of lower-income areas where the CRA is located, to raise those issues to see if, in fact, we should prioritize some of those areas to receive some of those funds as well. So these are just items that I thought we'd put out there and discuss and have a policy discussion and hopefully a policy decision as to how we could continue to do what we're doing now or change direction if we need to. But I'm looking forward to the report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Kathy Godfrey, Economic and Workforce Development.
Robert Science.
Good afternoon. I was asked to put a written report together by Councilman Weezer's staff as for a point of discussion. We've also asked that it be noted and filed as it's provided as informational purposes only, just for that. As you all know, the Community Development Agency was dissolved in 2012, and the successor, CRA L.A., designated local authority, took over the entity tasked with winding down the work of the former redevelopment agency. And it's governed by a three-member board appointed by the governor of California. In the process of the dissolution, and I would, I definitely think after we have this discussion today, you're going to want to get a full report, a much more refined report and analysis on the dissolution itself, but I can report to you to date that the city has or is poised to be the receiver of the following assets: From the CRA L.A. DLA, Designated Local Authority, 62 real properties categorized by the state as housing assets that the city has the right to develop for affordable housing or other uses as it sees fit; Access to housing bond funds which can be requested by the Housing and Community Investment Department as the housing successor; 20 grants totaling $60 million for infrastructure; 36 government-use properties including right-of-ways, parks, administrative buildings, easements, covenants, and air rights; 15 future development properties including key properties for development in South Los Angeles, East Los Angeles, downtown, and the Valley; and land use authority retaining important provisions guiding development in 30-plus communities in Los Angeles and assumption of certain significant projects like the Los Angeles Sports and Entertainment District. The city is also pursuing claims for millions of dollars in loans to the former redevelopment agencies that are either awaiting addition to the repayment obligation schedule or under contention. Additionally, the former redevelopment agency's reliance on debt financing, the CRA L.A. DLA holds approximately $80 million in bond funds available for project implementation per the Dissolution Act. Because the CRA had been prohibited by dissolution law and the CRA L.A. DLA did not have enough active projects and qualifying activity utilized, some proceeds through the community need is definitely there. Because of the predicament, the CRA L.A. DLA was, had been forced to refund a portion of their bond portfolio. Lastly, the former redevelopment agency's collection of public art holdings includes almost $5 million in cultural trust funds set aside in reserve accounts. The Interdepartmental Committee chaired by the mayor's office on dissolution continues to meet on a regular basis to direct the mandated dissolution process and advocate for strategies to preserve community-supported assets and projects of the city's former redevelopment agency, providing the building blocks for the city's new economic development department. The committee has two subgroups working on the transfer of grants and the associated matching funds and the transfer of CRA's real property assets. I provide in the report something of a roadmap about our own department and where it is right now, but I can tell you that if you look at other cities and municipalities, the L.A. County as an example, have taken actions to set aside revenue from property tax increases or boomerang funds. They've reassessed their redevelopment agencies, economic development efforts, and affordable housing projects.
This is the county.
This is L.A. County.
Right, okay.
And programs to focus on the most efficient use of their resources. Many cities in the state were supplementing redevelopment programs with general funds. The city has received to date $107 million. That has been nearly all assigned to the city's budget. It's anticipated the city will receive $16 million in January from the CRA L.A. DLA and between $30 and $40 million a year in boomerang funds. We're in the process of hiring lead staff to manage economic development efforts at EWDD. A more detailed approach to prioritizing funding, strategizing investment, and advanced program and project development can be addressed with expertise, research, and contributions with the staff working in concert with the mayor council and city departments. The city may choose to continue some of the more sector-driven efforts like the industrial incentive program or public health-focused convenience store conversion program, and in some cases, there are specific projects suspended due to the loss of gap financing from bond funds or tax increment promised. Phase 2 of the 29th Street crossings in CD 9, improvements on Cesar Chavez Boulevard in East Los Angeles, and the extension of the Red Car Trolley in San Pedro are just a few examples of public works projects lost to dissolution. So the discussion, the overall discussion, Councilman, as you raise, is knowing that resources are coming back. The city had identified them for the budget because the budget, the condition of the city's budget is such, and looking forward as to what we can use or how we can utilize. I think the really important thing now is that we get back as much as we possibly can. As far as bond proceeds are concerned, we'd have to honor all of the covenants associated with bond proceeds, but they would be spent in redevelopment project areas only. They wouldn't be available to be spent outside of redevelopment project areas. Again, this report sort of gives you an overview of where we are now to a certain extent, but again, it can be much more refined and give you much greater information. We're going to get an absolute report on the status of dissolution, but this is where it is now in terms of projected revenue.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. And I think overall, last year's budget, we allocated, I think, $3 million for economic development activity in the city. And for a city of this size, it really pales in comparison to what other municipalities are doing or what the need is out there. And you add to that the dissolution of the enterprise zones from the state, et cetera. You know, when you look at what the city is doing, we're doing very little to support economic development and to encourage the types of industries we'd like to locate here, make it more helpful for businesses to support existing businesses. So I just thought it'd be worthwhile to look at this and say, understanding that there's a huge need to cover our general fund deficit, and I say that loudly, knowing that our budget chair is sitting to the right of me over here, understanding that, but also recognizing that, you know, we did, the redevelopment areas contributed tremendously back to the city once the dissolution occurred with properties that are being sold, with the funding that was allocated to different projects that didn't go anywhere and they got put back in. I'm thinking of several in downtown, in Bull Heights, and two redevelopment areas that add, you know, pretty significant dollars. And throughout the city, we've seen the same thing. So I just thought it'd be worthwhile to look at this and ask that as a policy decision, do we want to continue on, I don't think a decision was ever made, or was there, there was never a decision made. It was like, okay, the dissolution's gone, we're going to get this money, it's going to the general fund. But we never had the discussion as a council to decide where that money would go, right? So I thought it would be worthwhile just to, okay, do we stay on the same track? And let's look at the options, let's figure out what's the best route to go. Or do we say, well, there's been the redevelopment areas which were targeted for being low-income areas, areas that need economic development activity, do we allocate some percentage of these funds to them? Or do we allocate some percentage of these funds to general economic development in the city in general? We only have $3 million, which is really nothing. But I thought it'd be worthwhile to have that. So before I jump the gun here, I did want to ask that we come back in 30 days, 45 days with a report on that, like if we allocate 25%, 50%, 100% to give us different policy decisions so we could weigh those options. And one of those options should be, let's leave it as it is. That's probably the best route to go. So just so we could have that discussion and see if we should take a different track.
I think it's very important to have that policy discussion without a doubt. In 30 to 45 days, there'll be more information that we can advance in terms of the properties that we're receiving and what it would take in terms of asset management, and hopefully we'll be able to give you a bigger picture of what those costs will be for the city to manage those assets, to market those assets, and get them developed. Because there are things coming back for government use, there are projects coming back for future development where the city has already invested a great deal of money. So the ideal, of course, Martin Square is one of them as an example, but the idea is that as far as a work plan being developed, to go forward and manage that, again, because we've asked for these things to come back to the city.
Right, and we have to, as you said, utilize these resources in ways that we haven't before sometimes. And even though we don't have a firm plan, you're right, we should have at least a distribution plan of how we're going to dispose of these properties, and that...
That's what the dissolution committee has done a great deal of work in that area. And I think having that report will really help you get an even narrower focus on the things that you were going to want to do going forward, and that will drive the budget decision as well.
Yeah, well, that's the only thing. Coming back in 45 days gives us, gives you a chance to provide that information in a way that makes sense.
I think we can.
Paul?
As I understand it, it's, so far, we've gone about $107 million, but we could anticipate at the minimum about another $25 million a year, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
So are we looking at, you know, we allocate some percentage of that, it's not going to be a percentage of the 100, well, we could look at that, that's allocated for next year, but each year we would be looking at a percentage of $25 million or so on average.
And I think if you make a definition of what you're going to contribute towards economic development, the private sector needs assurance that it's going to be there, you know, going forward. I think when you think about that, the things that I recall the most about dealing with private sector interests in development is they want the assurances that we're going to be there and stay with them through the process.
We'll come back to this with some specifics, with some alternative proposals and some what-ifs.
Different percentage options that could be allocated to economic development, and I know it takes a lot more time to do a work plan for that, so you probably don't have to go that deep to see until the council decides what direction we want to go, but at least some indication as to what that work plan may look like or where that would go, and you would have more information to make that discussion. Okay, thank you.
Good. Yes, Ms.?
I think this probably goes without saying, but thank you for your concern about the deficit, Mr. Weezer. And although in the last three years, we have erased about 90% of our structural deficit through great diligence by this council, we still have some to go. We're not out of the woods. But part of the way we get out of the woods is by continuing to attract new investment and creating new jobs and generating new revenues in the city. And you're absolutely right that we're, we don't have the tools that we used to do to do that. And so I think this is going to be an important report back to give us a number of policy options from which to, to, I shouldn't say from which to choose, but which to emphasize. The one caveat I would throw into this is that although the motion is focused on the former redevelopment areas, I gather from what I've heard from you and from Mr. Weezer that we're taking a broader look at that because, for example, we have, you know, we've lost state enterprise zones, some of which were not in redevelopment areas. There are a number of strategic decisions we're going to have to make in how to allocate our resources, which might or might not relate to the former boundaries of redevelopment areas. And so I would just want to take a little bit broader look than the former redevelopment.
Very good.
Yeah, but I think we want to also just make sure we are focusing on those areas of need. That was the whole idea behind redevelopment. And so we want to make sure that we're not skipping over, that we're not shortchanging, you know, that we're not forgetting about those areas that have the real need and who really were poised to benefit from redevelopment activities. So, thank you. Members, anything else? Okay, so without objection, we will ask you to come back in 45 days. Just give me 45 days.
45 days?
30 to 45.
Yeah, you have a little extra time. Extra time for the holidays. Okay, this brings us to item 9.
Item number 9 is an EWDD report and CLA/CAO to report in response to motion, Weezer, Price, Wesson, relative to the impact of Assembly Bill 93 and Senate Bill 90 on the city of Los Angeles State Enterprise Zone Program and the EWDD and recommendations for continuing and increasing existing city-level incentives as well as creating new business incentives.
Okay, certainly is a good follow-on to our last topic. Again, the concern that enterprise zone resources are not going to be available to assist those businesses that, you know, really are able to make a difference in our communities. So, Mr. Science, why don't you bring us up to date to where we are?
So, Robert Science, Assistant General Manager. So what you have in front of us is a series of recommendations of some tools that you actually do have in front of you, and it is a continuation. So one of the questions that was asked by your committee is that, does the Department of Water and Power, or are local incentives stay in place with the SEZs going away by state legislation? And the answer is yes. That is a local jurisdiction decision. So we are recommending that we, that the city does continue to do the DWP 35% discount, continue the Planning Department Current Site Review Fee Waiver for expanding businesses in the SEZ, and continue to reduce parking ordinance for businesses in the SEZ. We're also asking and requesting that you authorize us to continue our work to do the outreach. outreach from what was formerly our SEZ program management, which was promoting the SEZ zone and incentives, and to change it slightly from promoting our local incentives as well as the new governor's hiring tax credit plan and governor's business incentive fund. So with these recommendations, and then lastly, the last recommendation was to study further how we could develop more local incentives and be able to have in our economic development toolbox. And this will go along with the previous discussion of the capital investment. We are able to take the waivers, and the program officially ends on December 31st. However, businesses have all of next year to actually submit their vouchers to us, and we will be processing them through all of next year. We'll come back to you with an end date for the program, probably of September of 2014, which will allow us to basically close out the SEZ program officially. And the state is going to be replacing with a new map that's going to map out for us eligible areas for the hiring tax credit. And this will be an incentive that the businesses will apply directly to the franchise tax board. So it'll be really critical for us to be able to promote it to all businesses in the SEZ or that are qualified within that map for them to take advantage of that local incentive. So in short, although the SEZ voucher is going away, we are coming back with this recommendation to actually replace it as well as continue our local incentives.
And add the new incentives.
Right. And to look at and get to further study any new incentives that come.
Take a look at how they're going to impact.
Right. And we do have money to fund this in terms of the zone managers and staffing for this current year and projected for next current year out of the zone fund. So it'll be a known net city general fund cost.
Okay. Okay, good.
Sure. Thank you. So the question was posed as to whether, given that the state enterprise zones are leaving, and are incentives are packaged within that, do we continue those? And your answer is yes.
Yes.
Now, do we need any legislative fix for that, or are they just continue on?
Yeah. According to city attorney, no.
And it's department by department. So for example, the planning department has, under the previous incentives, we've had such things as site plan review waivers, parking reductions. Then we have the DWP, and they're building safety heads. So there... within all those different departments, those incentives can continue going on. They weren't impacted by the state legis...
Yes.
But we haven't... Okay. Now, the new incentives, that would be proposed under new legislation that we would need to adopt?
Right. So the new legislation, the governor's office is going to be actually releasing the maps. And so it'll be their map that we... that will allow us to get the hiring tax credit or local businesses to get the hiring tax credit. The maps have not been released as of today. They're expected anytime soon. And one of the big differences is that with the hiring tax credit is that they actually apply directly as part of their tax filing to the franchise tax board. So the city is taken out of the role that we had with the vouchers, where we would actually confirm and validate the vouchers and then send it to the state. This is directly from businesses to the state. So one of our big roles really can be played in terms of informing the businesses, especially for first-generation businesses and folks that generally don't have access to a lot of technical advisors. This becomes a good role for us to play.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we've got some cards. Let's take the cards. Will we take any other action? Samantha Beasley. Come on up, followed by Ed Shimi. And then Robert Breyer... Breyer. I'm sorry. Samantha.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Samantha Beasley, and I'm here representing the L.A. Chamber of Commerce and our 1,600 membership to support this motion to help maintain Los Angeles County's competitiveness. As you know, the loss in resources formerly provided by the enterprise zones and the CRAs has left cities with fewer means to incentivize new jobs. But this challenge also creates an opportunity for cities to independently coordinate their programs and incentives to strengthen their local economies in a targeted manner. The L.A. Chamber looks forward to working hand-in-hand with you to create the right tools for Los Angeles' needs to attract and retain businesses and jumpstart our economy. We thank you for your proactive approach in coordinating city resources to help Los Angeles' economy grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Noel Fleming? Oh.
Good afternoon, council members. Noel Fleming, Director of Legislative Affairs at Central City Association. I'm going to keep it brief. We're in strong support of this. I want to applaud the committee and the department for their work in kind of helping the city lead the transition with the phase-out of redevelopment zones and the state enterprise zones. We're here to support all the work that you do to encourage business activity in the city. Thank you.
Robert Breyer?
Thank you. I represent Community Health Councils. We, along with the California Endowment, we convene the Freshworks Coalition, which has been working for years now on expanding grocery retail opportunities in South L.A. and Central L.A. and East L.A. So again, one of the big casualties of the enterprise zone dissolution was the loss of hiring tax credits for the grocery industry. It was included in a broad category of retail services that is no longer part of the SEC program under the Brown proposal, which was approved. So again, you know, this is a state-level decision that doesn't necessarily... isn't necessarily tied to this body, but anything that this body can do to encourage the state or to sort of mitigate the situation for the grocery industry would definitely be constructive. And just to draw attention to the issue of economic development and food retail in general, we would support the Economic and Workforce Development Department to adopt or reconceptualize or carry on the work that the CRA was doing on this issue with the food retail incentive program, which offered a number of incentives and a number of... the city can do a lot in terms of recruiting and in terms of site remediation, in terms of expedited permitting and permit fee exclusions to help grocery retailers scale up in South L.A. and particularly considering that food... South L.A. is not an unviable food retail market. It's actually been proven to be a missed opportunity of sorts right now, and both for job development and sales tax revenue creation. And just the food industry in general, particularly the locally grown food industry and organic food industry is a major growth area economically in the next decades. And so anything that the EWDD can do to support this, including it in the strategic plan, would be very constructive. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you much for your comment. Without objection, we're going to continue and request to CLA with assistance from the CAO and EWDD to report back with the additional recommendations. And that shall be the order. Member, without objection, we're going to go back to item five. We did have a card on that. Claire Fox from the L.A. Food Policy Council. I'm going to give you a chance to stake your piece.
Good afternoon. My name is Claire Fox. I'm with the Los Angeles Food Policy Council, and we really appreciate you taking a look at the local impact of the dissolution of the CRA and state enterprise zones. For the past year, the Food Policy Council, through a collaborative healthy food retail working group, has considered the important role the city can play in attracting, improving, and incentivizing healthy food retail in areas of the city where we know that's direly needed. And we believe this makes sense, both in terms of economic development and the health and wellness of our communities. And in the last few years of its existence, CRA LA began quite innovative economic development work that was targeted at food retail and the food industry. This included a beautiful brochure called Market Opportunities: Incentives for Retailers. I don't have the original, but here's a copy. It's very colorful in its original form. And essentially, staff used this to aggregate city and state incentives in one place and to market and advance development opportunities to grocers and restaurants. They also began providing grants and business development services to neighborhood markets through the Community Market Conversion Program. And really, we'd like to see the city take up these food industry-targeted economic development initiatives. Investments in food retail have a multiplier effect in neighborhoods, and they're the key to improving health in struggling communities. So in addition to project management, resources, and services, we think the city can encourage both existing and potential food retailers to improve their food services through a variety of means that could benefit low-income communities. This could look like business license fee reduction, expediting and reducing costs of permits that are associated with new or revamped food retail and marketing assistance. And finally, we'd encourage the city, through the new Economic Development Department, to allocate staff resources to focus on the food industry and enterprise so that the city can create jobs while also tackling health and food access issues in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We certainly agree with you that our food policy should be focused on bringing greater awareness about nutrition, but also used as a tool for economic development. And so we support that totally. There being no other business before us, members, this meeting is adjourned.